Good evening, everyone. Time is about four minutes after five. I want to welcome everybody to this regular call meeting of the Temple City Council. Please rise for the invocation led by Transform Temple Director, Mr. Buford Craig. Pledge will be led by City Secretary Janet Lou Ellen.
Thank you, Mayor. Prayer by Thomas Martin. My Lord God, I have no idea where I'm going. I do not see the road ahead of me. I cannot know for certain where it will end, nor do I really know myself. And the fact that I think I'm following your will does not mean that I am actually doing so. But I believe that the desire to please you does in fact please you. And I hope that I have the desire in all that I am doing. I hope that I will never do anything apart from that desire. And I know that if I do this, you will lead me by the right road, though I may know nothing about it. Therefore, will I trust you always, though I may seem to be lost and in the shadow of death? I will not fear for you or ever with me, and you will never leave me to face my perils alone. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the law.
Thank you both very much. Next item is public comments. Any citizens that desire to address the council on any matter may do so. We ask that you step to the podium and state your name for the record or raise your hand on the virtual platform. And please know that no discussion or final action will be taken. And if I didn't say it before, we ask you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have a few folks that have signed up, so we'll start out with Holly Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and the legislation. My name is Holly Johnson. I am the Purple Heart recipient from chapter eighteen seventy-six out of Parker Heights. And with me is John Footman. He is our chaplain. I'm here tonight to cordially invite you all to our Purple Heart Ball that is only twenty-first of February two thousand twenty-six. And I also have our flyer as well as a few business cards to hand out to people to get our community involved into our Purple Heart City. And we are trying to get fundraising going and to get us out there so people know that there are Purple Heart recipients out here, and we need your help.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
If you don't mind, put those business cards right over on the corner of that desk so folks can have access to them. Pastor, don't pet that dog. That dog's at work.
Just reminds me how fair all my dogs are.
Dog was so good. So since we do have a few people that are here to speak tonight, what I like to do is we get one one person speaking at the podium, and then we have one on deck so the next person can just step right up. So Bobby, you're up, ma'am. And then on deck, we have Gary Tatum. Is Gary in the audience?
Oh.
Good evening, everyone.
Gary, if you'll step right up here and be ready to go next. Good evening, Bobby.
Okay, good evening. Bobby Thompson, nine oh four South Henderson Street. Mayor Davis and Ms. Grant, my district two councilwoman and council member. I feel we are due a public apology for being called the N-word. We are citizens of Belle County who are due respect and should be given it. We do the same to others. Reverend Gary Tatum, my pastor, Ms. Armistead, my best friend, Ms. Zoe Grant, and I was present at that meeting. We would like to be called black people or African Americans. Also, I encourage the black citizens to come regularly to the city council meeting. Mayor Davis, I have your letter regarding this matter, and I will read it. But I want to know, do you all review the live stream before bringing it to us in a meeting? I would like to say thank you on my behalf for your kindness, your friendship down through the year for letting me speak my piece. Amen, and may God bless each of you. Now the letter. It said, Dear Ms. Thompson, thank you for your letter dated September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, regarding derogatory comments made during the office of seven twenty twenty-five city council meeting. As you are aware, an unfortunate accident occurred during the citizen comment portion of this meeting where derogatory comments were made by an unknown virtual participant. At no time did staff or council participate in such comments. The virtual participant platform was immediately ended to prohibit any further disruption of this meeting. Furthermore, I provide a public apology to all those in attendance immediately following this excuse me, this instant. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, all citizens, whether participant in person or virtual, have the right to sign up prior to citizen prior to citizen comments. Disturbance or disorderly conduct in the city council chamber may cause the transgressor to be removed from this meeting, which in this case was done at my request. These remarks were inappropriate and do not reflect the action of staff or council. We will continue to encourage the ability to ensure our meeting are welcoming for all. Mayor Timothy A. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Mr. Tatum? Okay. Uh, Gregory Castor? Castor would like to speak? Yes, sir. Milton? You're on deck, my friend, as soon as he's done.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Members of city council. Uh, I, please bear with me. This is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting. Um, I just want to introduce myself first. I am a rather content and happy member of Temple. However, as of late, um, I've had a little bit of an instance come up with my son's mother. Um, my son is seventeen years old. He is autistic, rather severely autistic. And he's been staying with his mom lately. And, um, there is a CPS, uh, report filed on her uh, due to a number of alleged, uh, abuses. And, um, due to certain circumstances beyond my control, um, I handle all of his medication. So I see him every day. Up until about almost two weeks ago, when his mom decided that it was more beneficial to her, uh, that, um, that I don't see my son. So, uh, you know, as far as the CPS report was filed, they did report to the police department. How you doing, Chief Reynolds? Um, and they requested a welfare check. Uh, I believe that was last weekend. Um, that was per CPS, not me. Um, I, uh, it had been almost, almost a full week that I'd seen my son. Um, and I requested a welfare check on the tenth of September. And, uh, I called it five forty-five, the non-emergency number.
You got about a minute or so left. I mean, I'll give you a little bit more time, but
Yes, sir. I see that. Thank you. Uh, called it five forty-five for a welfare check, and I was instructed that an officer would contact me back to let me know an update on that welfare check. At seven twelve, I still had not heard anything from the department. So I decided to call back just to see what the update was. The dispatcher said that there was no, uh, no answer at the residence and that they couldn't force entry. I was not looking for a forced entry. Uh, long story short, seven nineteen that night, Corporal Littlefield called and said, and I quote, "We will try again, but we have already been out there several times. So I just want you to be aware, we will try one more time tonight. But after that, everything has been okay at that residence, so there is no need for us to check at a welfare anymore." Um, I think it was a little unreasonable. I think it was, um, indignified. And, um, I just asked for a little bit of respect towards me and my son, um, from the department that I firmly do respect, Chief Reynolds. Um, so I just thank you for your time and, uh, and thank you.
Your last name is Couture?
Couture, C-O-U-T-U-R-E.
The correct pronunciation. Got it. Okay. I think I butchered it a minute ago. Apologies for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Milton?
Welcome back, Milton. It's been a while.
Thank you. My name is Milton Hensley. My resident is five three two zero Luke two oh five. I'm resident of the Garden Estate, Assistant Living. I am thankful that I live in Temple, Texas. I really am. Thank you for the counsel, Mr. Mayor. My purpose of being here is to inform you again of the seventeenth annual life change. As you know, we still have those who are taking the lives of these innocent, innocent little babies. I don't know how in the world they can do that, but I want to invite you to the South Thirty-First Street at the Chick-fil-A for the life chain that will start, we will start gathering about one thirty and start lining up along the sidewalks at two o'clock. We'll be over at three o'clock. I want to invite all of you, the audience, council members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Milton, that is this coming Sunday?
Sunday.
This coming, coming up?
Uh, the first Sunday in October.
Got it.
First Sunday in October.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Milton, don't forget, my mom lives right across the hall from you. So be sure and wave to Sharon.
Is Alan online?
He is.
Okay. Alan, can you hear us?
Hang on. Yes, sir. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You're on.
All right. First off, let me say I really agree and blessed that Bobby was able to talk to you. And I'm glad that you were able to handle that. See, I was on, online at the same time. I'm glad you handled that situation quickly and promptly. The reason I want to talk to you tonight is I was at the workshop virtually and had to leave because my neighbor found a dog under my, uh, car in my driveway this afternoon. I called the five thousand number. They set up a animal services call for me. Within the hour, animals, animal services came out, and the young man was quite uh, efficient and proficient and got the dog out from under it and put him in his vehicle. But not only were they proficient, they were also very helpful and friendly and courteous. And they took the time to explain to my neighbor and to me what was going to happen to the dog. So I just want to put a shout out for the animal services and say thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking the time to log in and give us that good news. I hope you're feeling okay.
I hope someday to be able to come back. Right now it doesn't appear that's going to be anytime real soon. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Milton made it back.
I saw that.
Bless his heart. Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir.
Next up. Alan, are you done?
I'm done. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, you're fine. Next up, Dr. Asbury. You signed up here for four items, but you still get a total of three minutes.
In the same area, one of a separate.
Okay.
This point, I'm John Edinburgh from Temple, Texas. I'm here tonight first of all to talk on twenty twenty-five oh three oh eight R. It's about the resolution for sidewalks and modification of the barrier along the third street over the railroad. One of the first things is it'd be nice if we had both financial note on this, which, which I couldn't find, and also a diagram on this one. I did find on some of the other stuff, but this one not. And some places has, has the agenda and then has a worksheet or workplace that, and I assume you all can see what's, what's being, going to be done, but the public can't. If this, all of this material and work is less than a half a million dollars, I have no objections to it at all. If it's going to be several million dollars or more, I really think that this should be referred for public hearing and to assess whether this versus other needs in Temple or should come first at this point. Uh, but with, with, at this point, I can't say what, what, what we're going to pay for it at this point. So just some additional information, if this is going to be a four million dollar project, it's definitely, you know, I'd rather go to roads in South Temple and Midway and stuff like this. If it's going to be a half million dollars, I don't have any objection to that, that point. But just a better way to get a hold of information than having to call the city secretary or the city manager to get this done would, would be helpful. That's number one. Okay. Number two is twenty-five oh three eight and twenty-five oh three nine. And basically, Temple is annexing land out on the other side of the loop by the power plant for future, uh, and, uh, development of industrial park. And I'm for that. I'm glad we're doing that at that point. Uh, and I can't tell if it's twelve hundred acres or fourteen hundred acres or not from, from this, but it's a large amount of, of there. Way back ten or fifteen years ago, Parks Past the Bond issued for thirty acres out there of original Perry grass that had never been touched except for hand. It's been that way for thousands of years. It's off Bob White Road. And it's becoming surrounded by the landfill, industrial area, Panda Energy and stuff like this. It was supposed to have been developed and it never was developed at all. It's still just an old gate, and you can see the picture with the gate. That's what it is. Uh, it's got a fence that's broken down, uh, and, and that's it. And I'm worried about it. Are this going to survive with all this new and development out there? There's less than one percent of all of the Prairie in Texas is left, and that's one of the few places. There's only two places in Belle County that has it, Murleson Perry, which is the other picture and this. And we need to go ahead and at least start some simple development. A gravel parking lot, a simple gate, a kiosk with education. Take down the trees along pathways so people can run roadway on Bob, on the tower so people can see it. And that at least says, hey, listen, this is a precious place and we, we want to keep it. I can trust y'all, but I can't trust future city councils. And they, they might sell this unfortunately and destroy it. It shouldn't never be destroyed. It's, it's kind of like the San Jacinto Monument down around Houston. It's surrounded by refineries and it still, still stands there at this point, uh, there. So I, all I do is I would just encourage you to kind of really fastly start a basic development of this area so that we can make sure we preserve it. And, and this actually covered the hearing also with this. So I, but my plea is let's get started on this now, and it can be done for less than a hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a half million dollars. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Thank you. Um, just so you know, that, that piece of land, we're all familiar with that. That was, that was purchased with bond money. Right? Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's designated as parkland and will not be sold off. And, and this, this, uh, this development we're talking about tonight, um, it, it, um, Prairie Park is not part of that development in the area. Yeah. It's not endangered. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's near the development, but it's not endangered. You bet. Okeydoke. Rucker. Rucker Preston.
Counsel, good evening. Just want to share a few words with you. I'm wearing two different hats tonight. So first, with family promise, uh, I want to talk to you about the hop and how much better it is. The micro transit system and upgrade, and I know that's not something that you do yourselves. You contract with the hop to make happen, but your decision to work collaboratively with them for the micro change has been outstanding. Uh, we see families who come to us without transportation beforehand, who had to take the old bus routes on the old loops and everything that took just forever. And now families are being able to utilize that, uh, go where they need to go, and it's very cost efficient. And I just want to thank you for that. It's really affecting everyone. Well, not maybe not everyone in our community, but it's affecting the people who need transportation the most and really making a difference. So thank you for working with them, representing, uh, the city on that board and ensuring that, uh, people who need that assistance, uh, get it very efficiently. So thank you. Uh, secondly, uh, on behalf of Belt and I S D, I just want to tell you how much we appreciate the partnership with the city of Temple. Uh, we look at you as outstanding communicators, not just answering the phone whenever we call, but always in good communication. City Manager Myers, Chief Reynolds have been great examples of collaborative partners. We look at the entire staff within the city to work with the school district. And, uh, without that, we wouldn't have the community that we do. And so we're just really, really grateful and, uh, thank you for the partnership.
Yeah, thank you, Rucker. I always appreciate you taking the time to come speak with us. Next thing, I think that Ms. Councilmember Grant would like to address some of the concerns regarding the Zoom bombing from the August meeting, one of the August meetings.
Yes. So, uh, good evening, uh, Temple residents, staff and council and mayor. At our recent, um, city council meeting on August seventh, the city's live stream was hacked during public comments by online participants posing as Temple citizens requesting to speak on locals' concerns. These outsiders use derogatory and hateful content, including the use of the N-word and the display of vulgar and objectionable images. Some of you may have seen this and others may not, but the message was unmistakable and deeply offensive. I want to acknowledge and speak directly to all who were hurt by this act, including myself. To my understanding, a cyber hack, cyber hacking act event has not happened before since using Zoom. And as the first African-American woman to serve on this council, and there have been, um, other council members before me, um, I felt the weight of those words. The hackers' language and displays were meant to divide, demean, and distract us. But let me be clear. This city, this council, and this community are stronger than hate. We are stronger than hate. We showed that when we came together for the twenty twenty-four tornado. We were stronger together. So hacking is unwanted, and I'm doing this because of education. Because some people don't understand if they're not using a computer, what hacking is. And so it's an educational time for, for some of those people. So hacking is unwanted intrusion into a video and audio conference, typically on platforms like Zoom by individuals who disrupt the meeting with inappropriate, offensive, and distracting behavior. It often occurs when meetings links are publicly shared. The intrusion during the eight, seven council meeting was caused by an external actor posing as a Temple citizen using an opportunity through a shared link meant to allow community participation in a public meeting, exploiting a technical weakness in our program. These acts were intentional and their impact was hurtful to many listeners and viewers. I want the community to know that this specific meeting was hacked and nothing more. There was no one in the audience saying this. There was no one from the dais saying this. No data, applications, or devices were exposed. Online access was ended as quickly as possible to stop any additional disruption. This was immediately reported to the software provider for further investigation. If they can identify these actors, they will be blocked from all meetings going forward. We live in a world where sadly some individuals choose to spread division and hate instead of building unity in respect of one's race and gender. While I was personally offended, I refused to let the attack define us. Instead, I choose to use it as an opportunity to strengthen our community, our commitment to transparency, inclusion, and dignity in public service. This past, the past is the past, but it will, what we don't learn, but if we don't learn, excuse me, and grow from the circumstances, it means absolutely nothing. There should be no more silence, and I stand to make a difference as a council member who represents you. To every resident, know that your council remains focused on you. We all are here for our city. Acts of hate will never derail our purpose or our progress. Together we stand united respectfully. Dr. Zoe Grant, your council member. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on, uh, to the consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from that agenda at the request of any council member. Um, council members, we, uh, during workshop, there was nothing that needed to be pulled. So unless that has changed, I will entertain a motion for approval on item three.
Oh, we'll make a motion to approve item three, but I would like to highlight item C, that we are getting another, um, sideload trash truck. So let's hear it for the trash trucks, new ones. Yay. So I'll make my motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker with enthusiasm. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Council, please cast your vote. Item three passes four votes to zero. Moving on to item four. Is a second and final reading to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning and a binding site development plan request from Ag to Plan Development Lot Industrial on seven hundred two point zero six plus or minus acres located in the city of Temple, Belle County, Texas, addressed as one seven zero seven and two three five one Bob White Road. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And just a reminder about where the seven hundred and six acres are located. You can see crosshatched area to the east of Bob White Road. And here is an updated site plan. Of course, this is a planned development rezoning, requires the site plan. And as we discussed at the previous meeting, some changes were going to occur from the previous one to this site plan in which they have removed the access points along Bob White. Those are going to be, uh, determined later during the plating process. Just some uncertainty as to whether those locations, uh, were going to, uh, to be the permanent locations. So those have been removed. We're in agreement with that. I'll show you what that language looks like in a second with the, uh, the conditions to the plan development. And then it's, it's difficult to see, but the other change is alignment of the east outer loop, which in our current thoroughfare plan shows it along the eastern boundary of the property that has been, uh, shown accurately to the west, which there's been a lot of staff discussion about that being a more feasible location. So that's our starting point for this project, and we'll follow with a thoroughfare plan amendment. In the future, that'll come back to you all. We just did not want to delay this project. So three items that required a little more discussion of the eight conditions up on the screen. First one was related to access. We talked about that a little bit. Amending the site plan, but also just clarifying that, uh, with me as, as the planning director, whoever the planning director is at that time, and the fire marshal, uh, would work with the applicant at the appropriate time, probably the plating process to determine the And the fire marshal would work with the applicant at the appropriate time, probably the plating process to determine the access points to meet code. The second item in green, but it's number four on here, noise mitigation. A lot of discussion about the noise mitigation, just to make sure that what has been agreed to. Not only decibel levels, but also sound frequency. Anything that might become a nuisance to neighbors. The applicants who are here have been great to work with and very amenable. So what, what we have in terms of the language, and this is just a, a intro to it. There's a lot more on the other slides, which I can show you if you like. But the summary is that a noise mitigation plan must be submitted by a qualified acoustical engineer. Approved and shall address decibel level, duration, frequency, time of day, et cetera. A full list of the noise mitigation plan requirements can be found on slides five through seven. And in the ordinance that would address these different sections, noise mitigation plan standards, post-construction verification. Which before getting certificate of occupancy for each phase, then the readings would be provided at property lines. Or, you know, building areas to determine that make sure that it meets the agreed upon noise mitigation plan. And, and then also enforcement if, if, if the, if they're in violation, don't properly mitigate. So that's all been agreed upon, worked out with the applicant. And so the Rowan Group, Drenner Group, and then representatives from Rowan are here to answer any other questions. And then the other item, just about the outer loop alignment, they, they wanted the language shown on the screen here. Which they want to just clarify that this, this document does not. Does not dedicate right of way. It's an agreement to work together for that alignment of the outer loop, but it's not, it's not dedicating the right of way at this time. And so here is the noise mitigation section and, and it's essentially just, there are three different slides. I'll quickly go through it, but you know, the general requirement, that's really a summary similar to what I just presented. The applicable standards, not just decibel limits, but also frequency, et cetera. So it's a comprehensive evaluation to prevent this from being a nuisance to any existing neighbors or future. And then just what's included in the plan. And of course that it's, it's done by an acoustical engineer. Want to make that point clear. Also the post-construction verification, as I mentioned prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy. That verification is done, that it meets the plan requirements. And then enforcement and remedies, which we don't expect to have to use, but if we needed to, it's clearly spelled out. So just a reminder that planning and zoning recommended by a vote of seven to zero at the August 18th meeting. For unanimous approval of this rezoning. And happy to answer any questions. And of course, the Rowan Group is here to answer any other questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chandler. Council, any questions for Mr. Chandler? Okay, we reviewed this during workshop. So thank you for running back through it with us, Brian. And counsel, I will entertain a motion on item four.
I move to approve item four as presented, including the provisions that were made.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Council, cast your vote. Item four passes four votes to zero. Item five is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance designating approximately 554 acres located in the north. Located northeast of the intersection of Bob White Road and Lorraine Avenue. And further identified by property ID numbers 239676, 24266, 36491, 12894 and 12855. A City of Temple tax abatement reinvestment zone number 47 for commercial and industrial tax abatement. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, well said. That's definitely a mouthful. Truncating that down a little bit, what we're here to talk about tonight is a tax abatement reinvestment zone. As you all are likely aware, Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312 allows for cities to designate areas for. As a tax abatement reinvestment zone under two separate criteria. The first being that they, they retain or expand primary employment. And then the second to attract an investment that may otherwise not, not be there and to promote economic development within the city. And we're, we're looking for an or there, not an and. There are several factors that you consider. Some of those are quantitative objective factors, others are a little bit more subjective. And I won't read through all of those for you, but essentially we need to be able to. Say that at least two of those criteria are met with any given requests before moving forward with any abatement. Staffs received an application from Rowan Temple LLC for an abatement on property. It's actually a large portion of the same property that we just talked about with the zoning case. On the agenda tonight, you have the, the first reading and a public hearing for an ordinance that creates the reinvestment zone. As you'll recall, that's, that's step one in a process that has a second step, which is a chapter 312 contract agreement. Tonight though, we're just creating the reinvestment zone. And then you'll see that tax abatement agreement come back on October 2nd at your, your next regularly scheduled meeting. Along with the second and final reading of, of the tax abatement reinvestment zone creation. Just a little bit of background on that project. There's a lot of words on that screen, but essentially that says that the interest is to develop a data center on this site. They plan to invest at least $700 million in, in construction and create 40 full-time jobs with that. Staff has listed on this slide, the, the boxes that we believe are, are checked as part of that process. So you can see we do exceed at least two of those previously discussed items. And additionally, it will expand the employment base to attract major investment, contribute to economic development in the city as required by chapter 312. Happy to answer any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, anything for Mr. Olson before we open the public hearing? Nothing? Item five, subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. We ask you step to the podium. Pardon? Okay, we ask you step to the podium and state your name for the record or join Mr. Lidle on the, on the virtual platform. So anyone from the audience want to speak before we move on to virtual? On this weekend, yeah, if you'd like to step to the podium.
You'll have to state my name.
You do, just your name.
Amanda Sudes. So like I said, I didn't know about this. I just, I mean, here listening, but a data center. So, and this is why I said I have a questions. That takes a lot of water. Am I accurate and inaccurate in my understanding of that?
You know, there's, on this one, I don't believe that it does. In the past, they have, they've taken substantial amounts of water. Technology has changed to where the water usage is, is a thimbleful compared to what it, what they've traditionally used.
Okay. So you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't be able to answer this. So you couldn't tell me how much water this specific data center would need to use then, correct?
Yeah, not yet. Again, it depends on the technology.
One of the conditions of the plan development is that they are required to enter into a utility services agreement with the City of Temple. Prior to moving forward with construction. We are working with them at this point on that so that we can make sure that the water needs that they have. Can be safely supplied by the water system without jeopardizing fire protection or water supply for our residential areas. And so we, there will be a utility service agreement that follows this action. That, that, that will determine the specific amount of water that will be available for this project. But that is a condition before they can move forward with the development.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I think that answers most of my questions. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the audience? You want to let Mr. Lidle in? Is he, Alan, you there?
Yes, sir. I'm here. Let me first apologize for not introducing myself in the comments. I am Alan Lidle. I live here in Temple. And I have just one probably silly question. I'm over, I'm a senior citizen and I don't know half of what I already learned. But I never did understand how a tax abatement works and why we need to give them a tax abatement. And if we don't give them a tax abatement, does that mean they'll pull out and go somewhere else?
That would, that would, that would surely be up to them. There are a number of reasons why you'd choose Temple. We do, as Ms. Myers was talking about, there's water available, there's electricity available, but there's also tax abatements available. One thing that I always like to mention in these is it's not like the City of Temple is giving away current tax dollars that are, that are already coming in. With this significant investment, as I read in the item, it's over $700 million. There, along with that will come a significant tax liability way over and above what, what's currently being paid in on that land. And so basically what a tax abatement in this case is going to do is it's going to give them back some of the money that they will be paying. Into, into the reinvestment zone fund. So. It's a, I guess the best way to say it is you're, you're sort of giving them back some of their own money. But right now that's all Ag land and the, the tax revenue on that piece of land is minimal. Compared to what they'll be paying in the future, even after the abatement is applied. Okay?
Thank you. Is there one other tiny more question? How long is this abatement going to last?
10 years.
Yeah. Okay, that's the maximum length, right?
That's correct.
10 years, Alan.
Okay, and they cannot.
Well, that's what's proposed, actual tax.
Go ahead.
Sorry, mister.
Go ahead, Alan.
And they cannot, they cannot apply in 10 years for an additional or continued tax abatement?
No. State law sets the maximum tax abatement at 10 years.
Thank you, ma'am, sir. I appreciate it very much. Y'all have a good day.
You bet. You're more than welcome. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would just clarify, I'm sorry, this, this item is just to establish the tax abatement reinvestment zone, which is a precedent to enter into a tax abatement agreement. The actual agreement itself will be presented for your consideration at the next council meeting. Which will include the full recommended terms, including percentage and, and length. So I did want to be clear that tonight, you're not approving a tax abatement agreement, just a zone that would allow for an agreement to be considered at the next meeting.
Understood. Anyone else? All right, counsel, if there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a, a motion on item five.
May I move to approve item five?
Second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item five passes four votes to zero. Next item, item six is to consider adopting a resolution appointing members to various city boards and commissions. The council met with various applicants 10 days or so ago. And we have made the decision for, for placement of these, these folks onto our current boards and commissions. So on our airport advisory board, we'll be reappointing David K. Lee and Lester Fettig to fill expired terms ending September 30, 2028. On the animal services advisory board, we'll reappoint Charlotte Eldridge and Amy Hooper to fill expired terms ending September 30, 2028. Citizens Police Advisory Commission, reappoint Gregory Gregg, Sharon Rose and Thomas Senke. To fulfill expired terms ending September 30, 2028. And to appoint Roland Carnahan to fill an unexpired term ending September 30, 2026. On the civil service commission, the council will appoint Will Longbotham to fill an expired term ending September 30, 2028. On the emergency services advisory board, reappoint Suzanne Senke, Richard R. Wood and Will Cisco. To fill expired terms ending September 30, 2028. On the library advisory board, we will appoint Susan Long to fill an unexpired term ending March 31, 2026. On Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we'll appoint Niva Dean to fill an unexpired term ending March 31, 2026. And Doug Smith to fill an expired term ending March 31, 2027. Planning and zoning commission, reappoint Brennan Walker and Patrick Carney to fill expired terms ending September 30, 2028. And appoint Joey Agee to fill, to fill an expired term ending September 30, 2028. On the tax increment financing reinvestment zone board, reinvestment zone number one board of directors. Reappoint Brandon Bozon, Beau Harvey, Tyler Bradford, Brian Reinhardt, Steve Wright and Bob Browder. To fill expired terms ending September 30, 2029. And on the zoning board of adjustment, to appoint Scott Baker and Matt Nagley. To fill alternate unexpired terms ending March 31, 2026. So counsel, if there is no discussion on those. Those board appointments, I hope there's not, since we all agreed on them a while back. I will entertain a motion for approval on item six.
I move to approve item six with all of the names that were just read out by the mayor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item six passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item seven is to consider adopting a resolution appointing a member to the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Counsel, I would like to nominate Mr. B J Little to fill that, that opening. And if that's agreeable with everybody, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
I move to approve item seven.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item seven passes four votes to zero. It is currently 5:52. Thank you all for attending and this.